I would like to be be along with me. You go out here.
Okay. I gotta hand my
I'm sorry. I'm gonna move that camera.
First, I have a statement I'd like to read. It's not the actual oath yet, but it's a statement. All right? The statement reads, I affirm that I have not directly or indirectly paid, offered, promised to pay, promised to contribute any money or thing of value, or promised any public office or department holding a vote at the election at which I was elected, or a reward to secure my appointment for confirmation. Whichever the case may be, so help me God. Item which position is to be appointed is City Council Place Five. Now, with that being said, all right. Do you affirm that statement?
I do.
All right. If you'll raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Jeremy Finch.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully
I will faithfully
execute the duties of the office
Execute the duties of the office.
Of City Council Place Five
City Council Place Five.
Of the State of Texas
Of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability
And will to the best of my ability
preserve, protect, and defend
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States and of this state.
Of the United States and of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome aboard.
Mr. Finch, would you like to have your family come up and take a real quick photo?
Oh. That's just one. We haven't started yet.
All right, squeeze together like you like. One, two, three. Thank you very much.
With that being said, it is now six oh three, and I'd like to call this meeting of the Rome City Council to order Thursday, November the thirteenth. We have a forum of council this time. Would you please rise for the invitation? Father, thank you for this day and for this opportunity to go in our cell. We ask you to lead, guide, and direct each of us in our duties to fulfill our representation of our citizens. We ask you to do this in Jesus' name.
Amen. I pray that allegiance be to the Lord, and the United States of America, and in truth, in power, in his hands, for the nation, in God, in his physical, with every cheek, and throughout this world. I want to express my thanks to the parents.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna, since we have a wonderful crowd here tonight, I'd like to move forward to Chief Rockdale with our life-saving award.
Thank you, Mayor Council, appreciate you. Thank you for this time, this opportunity. Since I've been cheaper my first year, I've been blessed to have more opportunities to commend my officers. They have to get better action. And I get that again tonight, and I think that's a great testament to the quality of employee as a whole that we're hiring, with those police departments, too. So with that, tonight, we're going to honor Officer Aaron Austin with a life statement award. And Aaron, if I can get you to come up here. You didn't give a sermon, and you're going to make a crowd. I wouldn't be there. Officer Austin, on July twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five, you responded to a report of a motorized dirt bike crash from the city of Rome. Upon arrival, you learned that a nine-year-old male had collided with a brick mailbox while he was riding a small off-road motorcycle. Despite wearing a helmet, the child sustained substantial trauma to the head, neck, and face. You immediately recognized that the child was experiencing labor breathing and appeared unconscious. Demonstrating calm, decisive action, you donned your personal protective equipment, checked his airway. You discovered significant airway obstruction caused by poagulated blood and promptly removed it, allowing the child to breathe freely. The child's condition improved immediately, and he regained consciousness prior to the arrival of Olivia Mace, who then assumed medical care. In what would be an emotionally high-stress situation for anyone, you remain composed and controlled. Even after running medical aid, you directed your attention to the child's family and nearby neighbors, providing clear information, reassuring, and support. Your actions not only stabilized critical patients, but also brought calm to a highly tense situation. In many cases, police arrived before medical personnel, and your advanced medical training, quick thinking, and willingness to act provided improved invaluable. After conferring with Sergeant Superior, Sergeant Ritchie, and Fire Chief Estes, it is our unanimous conclusion that your intervention was directly responsible for saving this young boy's life. Your extraordinary actions, exemplary professionalism, and steadfast dedication to the preservation of life, I'm proud to present you with a police life statement award. Your conduct reflects the highest standards of our profession. Congratulations, Aaron.
Bye. Elijah's parents are here. They said a few words about you. Follow me.
No.
We are a family of faith, I believe. We don't think it was a coincidence that you and your partner were the officers that came that day. I hope no one ever had the view what I viewed with their own child, you know, picked their child up off the ground, off of something like that, not knowing what to do. But you guys came and knew what to do. And once again, I don't believe in coincidences. So I don't think it was by chance that you're the one that showed up who had the wife that's an emergency nurse. You talk about those type of things, and you have more experience in that particular area. And but I think there's more than just a life-saving award that you are giving this hero to my family because you continue to reach out to my wife during our time of need, continue to check on our son, and continue to follow up, and even came to visit our son at the hospital. That's going beyond the duty that the City of Rome has given you. We are very grateful for that and wanted to come acknowledge you for that. Our Jim, my son is, both of my sons are wrestlers, and they do devote well to our team, has made a wrestling award, a tough-like, a life gift now every week to the wrestler that shows the most grit and toughness, because everything that my son fought through to give back to help. So we want to present you guys with the tough-like Elijah Award. And then we have just a shirt from our wrestling team that we wanted to give you guys, which I think is very much.
Yeah, I think the photo would be incomplete without the award. There you go. Yes. Try to squeeze in. You got a little place. One, two, three. One more. Perfection. Thank you.
Have you another round? All right, at this time, I know everybody here, thank you for coming. It's well-deserved award. You're welcome to stay for the rest of our council meeting if you so desire. However, I'd like to take a short recess to allow the room to clear for those of you who wish to exit the room. It's just kind of no, you can't leave.
Oh, I'm gonna answer.
All right, you do, you gotta be careful.
Yeah.
All right. All right. Now that we have everyone here, I'd like to call this meeting back to order at six fourteen. We have citizen presentations. Mr. Sam McEason is asked to speak during the time when we get to that agenda item. Ms. Donna DeGarmo, if you would like to speak, you have the floor.
Turn it off.
Turn it off. Well, I can talk. Don't need it. My name is Donna DeGarmo. I live in Crown Point, and I was wondering if council would consider having some kind of ordinance about parking trailers on the streets for extended period of time. There's a couple of them in our area. One of them makes it difficult to see when I, you know, when I get to the end of the road, I have to like inch my way out to see beyond the trailer. And there's another one there on the same road that it's a, it's not enclosed. It's just a, I don't know, open trail, whatever. But it's black, and especially over the nighttime, you know, I could be right up on that thing before I realized it's there. Sometimes it's there, sometimes it's not. And I have asked him to put reflectors on it once, but, of course, that was a long time ago, and I guess he didn't think he'd need them anyhow. But I would really appreciate maybe an ordinance or something that would help prevent a possible accident, not only for me, but others in our area. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you. Moving on, announcements from mayor and council members going over the okay, on the calendar, we have this coming Saturday, the fifteenth, is our Fall Cleanup Day and Shredder Day. There'll be dumpsters available for household trash and big items, and we will have a shredder present for those of you who've got documents you'd like to have shredded. November twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, the offices will be closed for Thanksgiving. Now, December fifth, it will be our Christmas event at the Rome Family Park. Six at six P. M. December eleventh will be our next scheduled regular city council meeting. Are there any other announcements from council? Nothing heard? All right, moving on, I am to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you very much. Moving on to the monthly staff reports, I believe we have a report.
It's in the packet.
It's in the packet? All right, we don't need to still moving on.
We have questions.
Unless you have questions, the department heads report. Moving on to the regular agenda, moving on to item number C, the policy update for the police chief, Boxelli.
Sorry, I'm in my squeaky shoes. So tonight, your council packet, you should have three copies, a copy of three different policies. I'd like to sit for pretty good. Two of them are brand-new, and one is just an amendment and update to an existing policy. We start with the training policy, training department personnel, that is firmly an existing policy. The only amendments that have been made to that is it specifies certain trainings you're allowed to have is sort of installed and compliant with our accreditation process and people rules. When you're a supervisor, you have to have training in a certain amount of time. With the accreditation, if you hold a position like Sergeant Kira does, you have to go to a background investigator's school. You have to go to these other schools. And those weren't specifically outlined in the old policy, so it's just been updated to make sure that we're in compliance. But not only those, really, I mean, it's just good housekeeping to make sure that everyone has a clear understanding of what's going to be expected of their employees. All right, moving on to the next one. Any questions about that policy? Second policy is a new policy, is a motor assistance policy. Currently, we really don't govern what the officers do and do not do. And oftentimes, it puts us in a lot of situations to where the officer risk injury, where they are not trained or qualified specifically to perform certain vehicle maintenance acts. I use changing a tire for an example. If you put it on wrong and something goes wrong down the road, it could come back on us. And if I'm being honest, it's not specifically a law enforcement function. What this policy does is it prohibits officers from chelting tires for motors on the side of the road. It prohibits officers from doing vehicle lockouts unless there's a life at risk, an animal or a human. And it also prevents officers from doing things like jump starts and stuff, which also protects our, with all the electronics we have in our cars. It doesn't just say no, that what it also covers is it says that, you know, the officer will provide protection, will sit by in the car with the lights on, that we'll do everything we can to make sure that they're safe and that they don't get hit. We just won't be performing the manual labor. On that one as well, we have called the towing service that we use, All American, and spoke to them about how much they would charge to change tires and form services like that. Mike was kind enough to say that if they are a resident of the city of Rome, that the tire changing will be free, and they will come out and take care of that. So I think that was a nice perk. That's also an identity standard for that. Any questions for that? We'll bring them on. For my last one. Okay. The very last one is it's a new policy as regarding barricades and curries. We don't really have a policy that governs officers' actions in the case that you have someone that just doesn't want to come out of their house or a car or anything like that. A few months ago, we had a situation where another department out, and a person was suicidal and had locked themselves in their bedroom, and the officers on the scene decided that their best course of action was to breach the door and try to take this person into custody. Problem that is, is the person on the other side of the door has a hundred percent tactical advantage. You don't know what you're going into. You don't know what's on the other side, nor is it bad as it sounds. A person who's only threatening suicide is not against the law to kill herself, you know? And that sounds harsh, but a lot of times, police action amplifies the situation, or they may be exactly what they're looking for in the first place, is for us to take care of the situation for them. So what this policy allows is it allows more of a negotiation tactic and use minimal force. It defines the responsibility of everybody involved, and it also defines the clearness of our currying points. If A happens, our response is going to be B. If B happens, our response is going to be C. So you're not playing things, you know, just trying to play by your outfield. We will be prioritizing getting SWAT negotiators started as soon as possible when we have that type of situation. And then the incident commander will constantly assess the situation, and that they allow more disengagement. So what that means is that if I go, if an officer goes to a person's house, they're threatening suicide, they're alone in the home, no way, risk. And we have stopped making positive progress, but if they no longer want to talk to us, it's just getting worse. This gives us the option to retrieve from the situation instead of escalating through force and continued agitation of the person. If a party is involved inside the house or residence, something like that, then by all means, they're the priority of life, right? The third party. So that's what this policy, it covers. It is in compliance with modern best practices, the Texas Tactical Police Officers Association. This is kind of the direction things are going, and if I'm being honest with you, it's, I think it's a solid direction. Any questions regarding that?
Chief, shall we? How does, do you have a wellness check policy?
Me? It's probably like physical, mental wellness for the officers?
Well, no, for the, if you went out on a call on a wellness check for a resident, it seems like I've read in other municipalities near here, that type of wellness check turning into something that's a barricade situation. So I'm just curious if you have a wellness check policy that might dovetail into this.
We don't have a specific policy covering like wellness checks of citizens. You, I haven't heard from my grandmother in three weeks, you know, that type of thing. We don't have a specific policy that governs that, that pretty much just operate under legal guidelines, you know, can't force entry unless you're in perfection circumstances. It's such, we don't have anything that outlines our definite work. We don't have a standard operating procedure policy. Yeah, that's all I wondered. Put a lot of work into these. Any questions? I think that is a compliment.
I think it's a really good thing, being where, how we are situated with these of the highways and throughways. I think it's a good idea to have, especially the traffic pieces, to keep officers safe. I like the fact that we're protecting citizens, but at the same time, protecting our assets.
Thank you, guys. Very interesting.
Thank you, Chief. Does council have any further deliberation?
I make a motion. Yeah, oh, is that what you
No, it's okay.
Miss her deliberation. I make a motion to authorize the police chief to implement policy changes, police policy three hundred points zero two, police policy four hundred point one seven, police policy four oh one point four six, as presented this evening.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is about the old school building, and I, this is for information only. This is not for any vote or any action to be taken tonight by council. I just want to let the people know that we have this old, the old school, which turns a hundred years old in two, in three years. I mean, we need to know what the people want us to do with it. It's sitting there becoming more derelict by the day, and it's just being infested with vermin and God knows what else, and it's a liability to the taxpayers. We have to pay insurance and everything else on it. So in the near future, right come springtime, I'm going to try to have some public meetings to hear from the people in the town what they want to do with it. Now, if we want to save it, it's going to take a bond measure to do it. We have the plans already in the file. We already have all the designs and everything to bring this up to speed to make it into a first-class administrative center for the city. Yeah, it's going to cost more than it did several years ago when this came up. But we got to do something with this building. So with the people, we either want to save it, or we need to bulldoze it. One or the other. We can't just leave it sitting there vacant. So I'm just letting people know this is going to be coming up on the radar in the near future, and we're going to try to get public input as to what they want to do. If we want to save it, that's what it's going to take. With that said, I'll move on. That's all I wanted the people to know. Moving on to item number E, restroom facilities availability and alternatives to current facilities at the Rome Family Park. I'll be missing up to you about how it works.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. This afternoon, we wanted to discuss our current facilities at the family park, and I call it kind of vandalism. I mean, that's what it is. We've been having more and more, I don't know, events of people throwing our toilet paper, our utilities to clean the restrooms, going to the restroom, not in the restroom, putting rocks in, just destructive things. Can't have soap in there because you'll find it anywhere but in the restrooms. And it's becoming more and more of a thing. So I discussed with Amanda, and I kind of wanted to bring up a solution to the everyday use. And another thing, we always get concerns or complaints about the restrooms not being open during really cold days. But during cold days, that facility is not climate-controlled. So we have to turn off the water, we have to drain the commodes. It cannot stay on, because if not, it'll cost us more money to repair everything and all that. So porta-potties. Porta-potties are simple. They get delivered one time for two thousand seven hundred sixty dollars a year. They get cleaned once a week. They get, they clean, restocked every week. And at that point, it's, to me, it's less of a destruction. If something happens to them, the company will come in and replace it, do their thing on their part, and they'll be open twenty-four seven. So it doesn't matter if it's cold or not. They don't freeze, so it'll be always accessible. Now, with the family restroom, though, and I kind of noodled this before the meeting, events, city or city events, we can open the restrooms, the ones we have. As long as we're present and we open it before the event and close it after, the destruction's not there. It's overnight. It's, we've tried closing them at night, and we still get calls. We're just trying to find a different solution, something where we're not spending an hour a day, every day, trying to maintain them, and then you come back the next day, or Sunday was the latest one, where they just grabbed the toilet paper and strung it everywhere. The weekend before that, they threw a rock, they went to the restroom, they caused a beef stew. Just that, that's what they do, and we have to get all that stuff out of there, clean it out, and drain it. And it's, it's becoming a reoccurn issue.
I guess what we need from council is direction on spending the money and just
Yes, sir. We do currently have two thousand dollars that's budgeted for park upkeep and maintenance that we often do not spend throughout the year. And I hate to reallocate some of those funds to this type of endeavor, but we, we do have a couple of families that use it and would like to have some sort of facility for their childrens to use while they're at the park, but it, it's become a lightning rod for folks. I mean, not only do we have this issue with the restrooms and vandalism, as Mr. Dominguez says, but we also had someone break the fountain last year. We've not been able to replace that.
Three inches off them.
Yeah. So it, it just becomes a measure of, we don't have enough enforcement and folks to tend to the asset properly. So if council allocates more to move forward with this plan, we, we felt like this needed to be a council decision because A, it exceeds the budgeted amount that's been authorized, and B, this is a sensitive community concern.
Have we talked about any kind of surveillance or videos or anything?
So we have not. We have a game camera. It's kind of far, the closest we could get it, but it's not, you know, it's not a good camera. We would have to put internet out there or some type of good actual surveillance camera.
Because I'm just assuming that the people that are vandalizing the actual restrooms are going to vandalize these porta-potties. So So what happens when they're vandalized? What, what does the company do? They can replace them? Is that cop disher? Like what?
Uh, I asked the lady, I said, so what happens? They just power wash it? I mean, they clean it. They take out what's gone. Now, I did not ask if they break something, but it's kind of hard to break something in the, the plastic one because they're, it's a seen mold for the most part. You can't just rip out something out of there. Uh, but that is, how severe will it be? We can put a camera, the game camera right in front of the porta potties.
Um, I think typically won't they just turn them over and cause a mess? Is there any way we can prevent that?
Hey.
Uh, I've never tried to tip a porta potty, so I don't know how heavy it is or not. Uh.
Well, I mean, I've seen the wind blow them over, the force.
I can ask for tie downs and, and see what they recommend on that portion of things. Add more of a permanent, uh, uh, tie down or something because we don't plan on moving them. Once they're there, they're there. Uh, and not asking about breaking, uh, broken items, if that's the case.
I'm also curious about lighting in the area in the evening. Is there motion sensor lights?
Well, funding, you should ask that question because, uh, one of the things that the mayor had asked us to work on was there are several taller light poles, uh, onsite in the park that have not worked for quite a while. Uh, we were able to secure electrician to come out. We rented a hoist. They went up and replaced those lights. So they should be coming off and on it from dusk to dawn now.
That was fixed yesterday. So today will be, or last night was the first night they were on. Uh, but in the area of the porta potties, we just have to choose a location and install another, uh, a flood lamp or something with a motion sensor to light up. So they got lighting in that direction.
Nothing, nothing we do is ideal, unfortunately, because we, we have people who are intent on bad behavior. Um, but I would like to try, even if we assume this process for six months and then reevaluate it, how this worked out, that would be nice to see because I do know several times when children are at the park and there is no facility, especially if they've walked, there's just no way for them to get back to their house in time. So, um, we'd at least like authorization to try it for three to six months and see what kind of a reception we get with this type of an offering.
I think to begin on the front side of that Moore Street, I think right there, uh, if they're outing towards the public, towards the road, I think it's less to be vandalized. And the restrooms now, once you go in, the door's shut. You can do whatever you want and nobody, somebody has to physically be there to see you. But on the male side, only one person can go in. On the, uh, female side, it's two people. So it's going to be just kids or whatever it is. But they have more privacy to do it now the way it is. I think a porta potty is a little harder. It's more open. So it's harder to hide their events if they.
Watson. I think it's a good idea. I mean, they need restrooms and if we can't keep them open because people are destroying them, that's our, kind of our only option.
We just consider the cost of continually having to repair the vandalism as opposed to doing this. That's how.
Do you want us to try this for three to six months and bring it back? Or would you prefer, yes?
I will interclaim the motion to offer to direct staff to be just there.
I make a motion to, um, for the staff to, you already have a bid, but for you to go ahead and, um, procure these porta potties for six months and then at that time we can revisit.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Those in favor?
Uh, aye.
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 Aye. All right. Motion carries.
Thank you, counsel.
Okay. Uh, yeah.
It does adequately dislodge the situation.
Moving to item number F, uh, last meeting, council directed staff to develop or to put together an ordinance to, uh, update our fee schedule, uh, for the water, commercial water rate. So at this time, we have a public presentation. Uh, Mr. Easton, you have the floor.
Is it on? Thank you very much. My name is Sam Easton. I live in eleven oh seven Mount Lake. My wife and I have been lucky enough to live here a dozen years now. Um, previously, when we found out about the water rates having not been updated since ninety-nine, we had a expert come in and he said, we need to raise the rates to this huge amount. And everybody was talking about how pretty expensive it was going to be. And he, Trey gives this analogy about, he's got, got watering cups, right? It's going to take this much water to fund the water park, right? He says, now, if we don't, we don't raise it for the residents, we've got to put, put a whole bunch of water in the commercial cup. If we have low rates for commercial cup, we got to put it into the residential cup. So the money's got to be paid somewhere. Now, with the school, I think they've demonstrated that they like to spend money. Okay? I sit there and I look at these schools and I apologize, but they've got these Taj Mahal schools and they're elaborate and they're fantastic. And oh my gosh, but yet they want to decrease in their water rate? But the thing is, we're sitting here cutting them a break, but yet it's the residents of Rome that are going to have to pick up the slack. Because that, the need for that money doesn't go away. Okay? Just lowering it for them doesn't, it raises it for the residents. And we just had an election where it passed for the Northwest ISD, their tax increase. But the people of Wise County, as Wise County always does, they said no to the school. Okay? So the people of Wise County, they don't want to give the school any more money. Don't, don't cut them a break. You're going to get a new school someday, they promise, over on the other side of Ellis. Is this break going to extend to that too? Because they're going to use a lot of water too. Okay? So where does this go? How far, how far does it, what's this going to cost us in the long run? Okay? Let them pay the same rate as everyone else. It's the commercial rate for the school and it should be the same for all the commercial, all, all commercial, uh, users of water. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. All right. Uh, again, at the direction of council, we developed ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero eight, which updates our fee schedule and provides an exemption for bond welding as well as the Northwest ISD. So I will open the, I would just like at this time to go on the record from me personally to state, and after talking to several of our citizens, that I cannot support this. I do not support it. I don't think it's fair. So I just want to go on the record as stating that I am not in favor of passage of this order. But at this time, I will open the floor for further deliberation or a motion to adopt.
Okay. So we had this discussion last meeting, correct? Last meeting we took, two meetings ago? I just want to make sure because it was suggested that some council members didn't have an opposite opinion as to the, the, um, the results that we, we had that night. So I wanted to make sure that everyone is actually discussing this and, and voicing their opinions because if we have opposite opinions, we should be able to discuss them, correct? I mean, and compromise or, or just go with your heart and say, no, we don't want to. I just want to make sure that everyone's voicing their opinions and we're getting, we're, we're discussing this in the meeting.
Okay. My question is, what, what was the water meter on the school?
The base rate?
No. What size was?
Well, we had three inch meters, four of them that had been allocated to the school, either in irrigation or actual water flow. Mr. Dominguez can answer some more of these questions. We need to do an audit of the new school to determine which is which at this point. But Jesus, do you want to jump in?
Uh, uh, from what I've seen and been through, there's one three inch meter going to the school and two three inch meters going to, uh, irrigation on the new school itself. And then you got the other school that has quite a few meters as well. Uh, but we have to, I can't remember off the top of my head how many meters. There was a few, uh, irrigation also. They got the football field and they got the, the building itself, uh, for irrigation. And I'm sure they got a few more in the system.
Okay. Can we just recap what we talked about last time and?
That's what I'm trying to do.
Okay. So, so Jeremy, I don't think you were here that, you were here, but you weren't here.
Right.
Okay. So what I think we settled on, and if, if the council is okay with this, I would say, can we please stop referring to it as the school district's lines? Because it does not matter who's on the four inch line, whose name is beside the three inch line. The fact of the matter is, if there is one at the four inch line that we are going to grandfather in at the two inch rate, then how do we say that we're going to skip over these three inch people and not grandfather them in at the two inch rate? It just so happens that those lines belong to the school district. What we said last time was that the three inch and the four inch lines would be grandfathered in. Those that were not irrigation based, if they're watering yards, they need to pay the full rate. But three inch lines that are existing, three inch lines and four inch lines, non-irrigation, doesn't matter who they belong to. And it sounds like right now we know of four lines that we are going to grandfather them in. Because regardless who it is, there's a budget. We also said any new construction, any new commercial construction would follow the new rates that we set in place. That's what I thought we were in agreement with. So I was kind of surprised in here that, that staff had been directed to write another ordinance for something different than what we had talked about.
What I'm looking at here on this, the two inch rate and the three inch rate are the same.
Which ordinance are you looking at, Mr. Johnson? There are two different ones.
Twenty-five dash zero eight is the one that's on the table. That's the one, that's the one council directed staff committee.
What's the only one I have on?
They're, they're the same two inch and three inch. That is the, that I had in the store. That's the one where it's going to grandfather those lines out.
You don't grandfather anybody in. This is a trigger. The P seven thirty. The four inch will be, it's not just number, it's a higher number, right? One thousand three hundred forty-four is the whole street. But they want, if it gets grandfathered in this four inch, it would get down to a student. So this would be the base rate. Okay, that's grandfathered. Same with the school, three inch irrigation. No, three inch.
Okay. So this is a big number, yes, sir. Okay. I was looking at this. How about?
I mean, if we're talking about fairness and being equitable, I don't know how on earth you can look at grandfathering the four inch lines and not grandfathering the three inch lines. To me, doing something different shows favoritism. Doing anything else but grandfathering both. If you're going to do one, you got to do the others.
Well, if I have a flat, I'm only changing one tire. So how's that favoritism?
I don't understand that. And now you need your help then.
Well, you have four tires. You're only dealing with one. The other three are left alone. That's what you're doing here.
Can somebody help me with that?
Okay. You, you, what you're saying is we have four water lines. If we only change one, you're saying we're showing favoritism to that one and not the other three. So what you said?
What I'm saying is, uh, can you see ordinance twenty twenty-five oh seven in the bottom left corner? I had to separate them. I had to take them out of the paper plates. They got twenty twenty-five oh seven and twenty twenty-five oh eight.
What page are you on, Mrs. B? Two?
They're both page two. Do you see where I am?
You see, there's something you need to search together.
It's, it's not there. And then this other one was there. It's okay. He is looking at this one.
I'm clear.
I'm going to do a record. Okay, she let me say, okay. The very one. We reference those things on the record. So that's the most I got. It's on there. And this is the one you were looking at.
Okay. So Mr. Johnson, with the one that at the bottom says twenty twenty-five oh seven. See that one?
Yeah.
Okay. So we're specifically talking about the four inch lines and the three inch lines. Do you see those?
Yes.
So at four inch lines, there is one. And it's, the new base rate is three eighty-five fifty-six, which is the same as the two inch line proposed rate. You see that?
Yes.
So we're saying we're going to grandfather that one four inch line in at the two inch rate. According to this new ordinance, this one shows that the three inch lines would continue, would not be grandfathered and would be subject to a new rate of seven hundred and eighty-four dollars and thirty-five cents per line. So you're grandfathering a four inch, but you're not grant, you're not providing the same, it's something equitable to the three inch, or you're skipping over them. The three, the three inch lines, if you look at the other page, twenty twenty-five oh eight. See that one?
Yes.
Okay. So the four inch line, same one, they're grandfathering in at three eighty-five fifty-six. This one shows the three inch lines split into two separate groups. Three inches that are specifically for irrigation would be charged at seven eighty-four thirty-five. Because we've said we're trying to conserve and we want to encourage people to conserve. But that three, that other three inch line, however many there are, and that's what we're saying, we're not sure how many there are, that would also be grandf, grandfathered at the lower two inch rate of three eighty-five fifty-six.
Okay. So the three inch non-irrigation line, we don't know how many lines that there are.
Mr. Dominguez was saying earlier that he thinks there's three with the new school that are irrigation only and one that flows to the school. Just didn't have that information when I put the chart together.
So there, there's just one that would be grandfathered in, none?
We know.
No, ma'am. There, there's two.
There's two.
The new build. They just recently finished all that and they just installed that meter, I think, within the last few weeks.
So they have five meters at the school?
They, they have like ten meters. They have a lot of meters. But the big ones that affect this is going to be two irrigation at the new school, one domestic. So that's the building. And then at the other school next to us, we have one, two, two irrigation, one, two, two, uh, domestic also. But I don't know what they're doing. I mean, if we present this, they could cut down and say, we're turning them all off. Whatever, whatever they do, that's, their changes with the new school, they have not came forward with the plan to us.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, but this three eighty-five fifty-six, it is the new proposed rate. What is the current rate?
Forty-four dollars and eighty-two cents.
So we are still, we are still eight hundred times the amount we're currently charging. Is that what I'm, is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah. But as far as your hundreds, more than eight hundred, I can't guarantee the math on that.
Eight hundred percent.
You do see there's a column that says rate change per month. And so it'd be about three hundred and thirteen dollars a month change for the line. What I'm, I think I'm hearing is two that are regular to each school and two irrigation at each school. So you, they have a total of eight lines. You split three of those into the first blank column and the other, excuse me, four of those and then four of those. And so you'd have a three inch that are non-irrigation and four and three inches that are irrigation. a three inch that are non-irrigation and four, and three inches that are irrigation at four. Which those, the delta on that, Mr. Johnson, is seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars, fifty-three cents a month. What we're not sure about, you know, they can't, can't really turn off irrigation to the school itself because you have to have that for the students and the employees. But they may decide to condol, consolidate some of their lines as it relates to irrigation or, um, those meters that are allocated to irrigation, so we may actually see those four three inch irrigation lines come down to a lower number. Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah, but. First to stop them from shutting the irrigation meters off and tapping back into the other meters to irrigate with.
So they can consolidate on their end, that's fine, but now they want a new line, they have to pay their impact, the impact fees and everything else as, as a new build. Yeah, but if they rearrange their irrigation and reroute it, as long as they stay with the irrigation meters, they're meeting the state requirements of backflows. That's on the private side.
It's unlikely that that would occur.
Yeah, it's a lot of piping and a lot of, I don't know if it's even worth the trouble for them, but that is school's decision.
So three lines, if we grandfather them in at three eighty-five. That's thirteen thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars that we're getting per year from Northwest. Or from these three lines. If we, if we keep it at the seven eighty-four. It's twenty-eight thousand.
You've got a fifteen thousand dollar delta hopefully between the two. If, if it was three, I think there's actually, uh, four in each of these columns, so I think they have a total of eight meters all in from what Mr. Dominguez is recalling from his inventory.
I'm sorry, I just. How can we say that we are going to grandfather a four inch pipe at the two inch rate? But we are not going to grandfather a three inch pipe at the two inch rate?
I'll explain it.
Thank you.
Here's what's going on. This whole grandfathering thing is a really bad idea. Okay, I'm sorry, it is, I, I, I do this. You, you're right. We, the, the citizens should not be paying for these water increases and giving cuts for the school district, okay? They are an entity just as well as a customer, just as well as any other store, retail, whether it be retail or residential, okay? I don't know of a municipality that does, and I've done some checking with my friends at Justin, Northlake, and Roanoke. None, including us, we do not give any school district any sort of discount whatsoever. However, in the case with Modern Welding, they have been here twenty, thirty years, okay? They've been paying a forty-four dollar flat meter fee for god knows what. To jack that price up on them immediately. It should be like, well, increase it some now, but expect the price of the meter go up in the future. To, right now, the way our utility fund is and the way water is right now all around the area. We cannot, I can't foresee, and I would say this to any groundwater conservation district, any river authority, anything like that, we cannot be given discounts right now on water. We have to transport that, we have to treat it, the Warmup Creek has to treat it, we have to maintain our lines, we have to maintain our pumps, we have to pay the operators that have to do this stuff every day. To grandfather in an irrigation or a school is, is not the right way to go. It's not, not in my opinion.
And I agree with that.
Yeah, I tend to look at this kind of similar to your, our half cent sales tax situation. Where we send a half cent to the county and we get probably about an eighth of that money back in the form of lower property taxes. And when I look around, I'm sure all the citizens are kind of the same way paying their property taxes. I know myself, I'm to the tune of about thirty-five hundred dollars just to Northwest ISD. And, um, I don't have any kids at school, but that's okay. But the point is, is that they're already, we're already subsidizing through our taxes. And we should be, we'd be subsidizing them for water. Our citizens are already paying.
If I can just make a statement, I don't hear that it's for the school. What I hear Mrs. King saying is because when you look at the chart and you look at the jump from three eighty-five fifty-six and then you see the big change and then it goes back to three eighty-five, how do you explain to the customer, regardless of who they are, that the three inch water line should not be considered? I think that's at least what I'm hearing from the discussion. You strip the name off of it, call it McDonald's and Taco Bell for all you want. Um, the main thing we're trying to do with this, and I understand what you're saying to us, Mr. Finch, this is the issue with this utility fund for years, and back to one of the residents' comments when we didn't change sewer rates from eleven dollars for twenty-four years. That was irresponsible. And now we are all paying the price. General Fund is subsidizing the bonds for all of these public works projects that are now being done on behalf of when those should be coming out of our utility fund, out of user fees. So we're, we're trying to incrementally change this to where it's equitable for everyone. The existing folks that have been here now and, and for a while. And then we give a clear indication of where it's going in the future, which is why we have the two different rate charts to con, to concede or contend with. No matter what council decides, somebody's not gonna be happy. Just when you have to change water rates regardless, someone's not going to be happy, whether it's on commercial or residential. But we do need to equalize this where we have a path forward so that we can implement a policy that helps to stabilize that utility fund.
So since we have the one four inch line, I mean, to, to Mrs. King's point. Have the four inch line just grandfathered to the three inch line? And then they're all the same.
Decision for you all to choose. Our, our issue is, and when we talked about this two meetings ago, was that Modern Welding has been here so long and was put in so long. There was very likely no concept of whether they were putting in a two inch or a four inch and what that might mean.
But they're still using the system and using that four inch line.
Yes, they are still using the water and, and everything else. All I can say to that is just like anybody else, their impact to the system.
Well, they need to maybe made aware, you know, we'll go up on them right now, but in the future, we're gonna have to go up on them even more.
So that the plan for this implementation is to change and gradually increase it every three months for a period of time so that it's not just kind of a large.
Yeah, not a shock.
Increase, because the last time council considered this, especially on the commercial businesses, we did hear from some folks that, um, when I went back and listened to minutes of meetings, that it was an undue hardship or something they didn't know they could sustain and remain in business in Rome. So we're trying to give plenty of ramp up, if you will, to right-size these base fees so that we have, uh, something that's equitable.
We're taking the, the approach that we just don't want to be in the grandfathering business. Shouldn't we use the same approach to gradually increase and remove the grandfathering over a period of two years or something like that?
Anything can be done in helpful direction, isn't it required?
I think that's fine. I just. In my heart of hearts, everybody knows, everybody knows in this room that I worked for the school district for twenty-something years. But things are not all roses, or I'd still be there, right? I am, I am not showing favoritism to an entity. I do believe in this room, there's very much some fallacy of thought of how schools are funded and what schools need and what, what is appropriate. But that's beside the point here. The point is, you have, what, five lines? And it's almost like. Maybe they did, maybe they didn't know. I don't know, I don't know enough about the construction business to understand. Did they know that, that they were probably putting in lines that were way too big? I don't know. But they've been here a pretty good amount of time. And they are, if not already, Northwest ISD is going to be the largest employer in the city of Rome. How can we treat them, and then it doesn't matter who it is? If, it doesn't matter, if that was HEB, how could we treat them differently than we're going to treat this welding company? Don't tell me that it's because they're a school and they can, they can get money through a bond. Don't tell me that. That does not fly with me. And quite honestly, while we're talking, I, I'm just going to say this. While I appreciate the heads up that there was going to be another ordinance placed on the agenda tonight. I do not appreciate the fact that that ordinance stemmed outside of a council meeting and directly contradicted something that this council had, 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 had directed city staff to do. In my mind, we could have brought this forward, we could have had a discussion, we can change the ordinance however we wanted. But presenting something and having something prepared to pass. To me, that is something that an old government of Rome would do. It is not who we are.
Okay, so we have a couple of options then. Do we want to just grandfather the four inch to the three inch lines? Do we, I mean, what, what do y'all think?
I don't want to be in the grandfathering business. And I think we should, uh, phase it out. If we're gonna give them a break, we phase it out over a couple of years.
And just to be clear, the ordinance in front of the council for action is twenty twenty-five dash zero eight. That is the one that is for the council that you can amend, adopt, or reject.
I say. We're gonna reject, it's eight, the one that.
The eight is.
The one the council directed.
The eight is, um, without NISD.
No, seven.
Good discretion, okay.
Seven, seven.
Seven is without NISD, um, being grandfathered in. That's all of their irrigation meters and regular meters at the full seven hundred and eighty-four dollars and thirty-five cents per month. And then the secondary ordinance that was put together is the oh eight, which gives you the option for three inch water and three inch irrigation. Now, staff, we can go back and we can rework these and take that direction and bring it back to council for further.
No, we're gonna have the, all the new base rates be the same. No, nobody's getting grandfathered in. But it's gonna be an extended period of time that they're going to go up.
Or is what you're saying, Randall, are, are you saying that they pay three eighty-five fifty-six, that they both, the non-irrigation pay three eighty-five fifty-six for a period of set time? What, what, what do you think?
Yeah, yeah, like a year, and then we go up one of the next year or something like that. But I, I think long term, this grandfathering thing is gonna fight us.
Okay, that's, that's, that's fair. I mean, that's fair, if we're doing it for everyone.
It's, it's also a bad, bad look when everybody else in this town is having to pay increased water revenue throughout and we're already gonna get a lot of questions and a lot of heat from.
Well, we are increasing the rates, it's just, it's not the total amount.
Right, but if we start grandfathering people in like it's proposed, now, your idea, that's middle ground, okay? It's just, you're setting a dangerous precedent when you start grandfathering people in.
That's all I'm saying. Yeah, this is just a phased-in rate is what it amounts to, it's not a grandfathering scheme. And I, I think this, by phasing it in over two years, this also, or over one year, or whatever the new side. This also provides these individual businesses and entities with the opportunity to change out their meters and reconfigure.
I, I have a comment on this, so it, it all can be done whatever way we go, but my question is, and we gotta make it clear, is Modern Welding or the school, doesn't matter, say they want to reduce their meter, hundred percent, they gotta pay for a new tap. We will go in and, and, um, cut off the old tap, abandon it, and put in a new one. Because three inch or a four inch line to a two inch meter is still, to me, unfair. It's still a lot of balling going through, or we can change the meter out only. Uh, but I would push to put a new tap where we know where it's at, and two, uh, they're still gonna have to pay for the plumbing and all that on the customer and awesome.
Does Modern Welding use that much water to, to warrant a four inch meter?
I'm gonna go off my memory. On their side of the, of the meter, they reduced down to a two inch meter, or a two inch line, sorry.
Yeah.
I, I don't know why they put in a four inch, been there for years, maybe they did something else, but.
It went from seventy gallons a minute to a hundred twenty gallons a minute, right? Basically. Okay.
But again, if we want to reduce meters, uh, do we want them to start from scratch? That way there's full accountability?
Yes.
At their cost.
So the lines going from the meter to the, the business would have to match whatever meter you're putting in, correct?
Oh, from, from the city big line to the meter needs to be the size of the meter. From the meter to their side, they can just put a reduction, and what they do with this, what they do with it, they can leave it a three inch or four inch. That will affect their pressure, but that is up to their plumber to decide if they want to replumb their entire building, their irrigation, their whatever they want to. Uh, but we just need to be consistent from the, from the water main to the meter to include the meter.
Yeah, I think whatever you think is good, then I would agree.
I think it'd be a better accountability for the city, that there's no computing.
But we just need to figure out the wording, how are we going to word this? Is there a way to amend twenty twenty-five oh eight to where, um, I make a web? To where. Does it need to show? Do we need to put a date on it?
Actually, I'm gonna punt this with the carbon because he's your tutor. He helped, uh, kind of draft these in the beginning, so I'm gonna wait for him to weigh in before I pick it back up.
I think on this particular amendment, it's best if we go ahead and revise the chart to let everybody know exactly what the rates are as, as scripted. So I would caution against someone trying to draft a, a motion tonight to, to spell this out. Why don't you express the intent to staff what you want it to be? I'll draw up the new ordinance and present it to you and bring it back for, for action next time.
Yes. So we're directing staff, we don't need to do anything tonight. They'll, she'll fix the ordinance and then bring it back to us.
Carlos handled that, yes.
We're okay with these new base rates on twenty twenty-five oh eight, but we just need some kind of timeline in there.
Well, I need some clarity from the standpoint of the new base rates, there, it's actually the small chart at the top. So in both of your ordinances, this would be your, your base rates that we recommended, is the one with just two quarters. So if we're going to move into, this is your fully recommended TRWA. The question now that I'm hearing is how long are you going to give them to move into this new base rate?
I know I've probably asked this before, but can you extend the time for the three and four inch lines? And, because we're doing it for a year right now, aren't we?
We talked about eighteen months.
Eighteen months.
For some of these, and then, you know, we can certainly adjust the three and the four inch to be a twenty-four month implementation. We're just gonna have to stay on top of it with our calendars.
Yeah, I didn't know.
Because it, it's not gonna automatically change, we're gonna have to manually go in and, and reflect that.
I think the base rates effective, no, whenever we say they're effective. Um, next, next month, it's gonna, it's obviously not gonna be November thirteenth. But these base rates are fine and, and it spells out that three inch irrigation or four inch irrigation is, it separates those out. That bottom table does, the top table does not.
So if, what I'm hearing from council is, what I think I'm hearing, the bottom table will become obsolete. It will just be the top table that everyone will be charged.
Phased in.
But it will be phased in on a longer period, whether it's three inch or four inch. To get away from the grandfathering.
You want to six months, twelve months, eighteen months?
We're getting way too short. We were, we were considering, uh, eighteen months for all of them and then gradually change it every three months, each quarter. But that's, to Mrs. Ty's point, that's still a significant impact to those businesses in the three to four inch range. And we're trying to be sensitive to the fact that the last time council discussed this and brought it up, this was a big issue in the community. We have some small mom and pop stores that really, um, will be affected. We have some small mom and pop stores that really, um, will be affected by any decision that we make.
That, that's not what I was thinking. I was thinking down at the bottom are the new base rates.
If, if we do the grandfathering, yes.
But, but it's not, but it's, if we, we don't wanna call it grandfathering. Because grandfathering sounds like you're, you're my grandfather forever. I don't know if that's how that term got its name.
Not exactly. Well, if, if, if this is, if this is the ra, the route that's proposed to go, what do we tell somebody that lives over a grocery store? You know, that, that, that has a, a hard time making ends meet as it is? When we're grandfathering in Northwest ISD and modern welding, how, how are we gonna justify, well, these guys get grandfathered in, but you guys don't?
We're not, we're not saying we're grandfathering somebody in. We are raising everybody's rates. Everybody's rates are raised, no, no matter what.
All right.
I just wanna make sure we clarify that.
But, but I don't, I, I don't think we're talking about raising these four inch lines from whatever they currently are to $1,344 a month. Is that what we're saying?
That's what Mr. Loftus presented and.
Is that what you're saying, Randall?
Yes.
So one of you, let's go back and double check our numbers. Because I'm seeing now the three inch line is on the charge shown at the three inch. Yeah, that's correct. I'm sorry. Let me miss, let me restate that. The three inch line would be at 784 and the four inch line would be at 1,344. Both of these ordinances were prepared with modern welding being grandfathered because $1,344 as a base rate is a significant amount for that business.
Okay, so can we say some, am I on?
Yes, ma'am.
Can we say something to the effect of the commercial customers who currently are at it's a meter size greater than two inches that are non-irrigation lines will pay this, this rate of 385.56 for a time period not to exceed blank. Twelve months. I don't care.
From a practical standpoint, any council at any meeting could come back and change that ordinance. So really what you probably need to do is set your rate and then just direct staff to bring the ordinance back to you in one year, 18 months, and you revisit it and you reset the rate.
So that would mean every three months, we'd have to do this for two inch lines and bigger.
Or every year for three and four.
Three and four inch, okay.
If that's when you, you wanna do it on an annual basis, then yes. You bring it back on an annual basis and you revisit it.
Or can it say something like unless otherwise noted, uh, effective January 1, 2027?
I can draft anything you tell me to.
Well, but you guys, are we really saying that we're gonna charge this four inch line $1,344 effective immediately? Is that what you're saying?
Oh.
No.
Oh.
Okay.
No, that's why.
We're, we're saying we're gonna do the 385.
No.
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 What?
What I was hearing was the, it would ramp up to the 1,344 over a two-year period with changes every quarter.
Yes.
That's what I was hearing.
But for now, what are we doing? For next month, if something passes, what are we saying they're gonna say?
We're gonna have Carmen rewrite it so that, uh, it goes the phase in over a two-year period for that four inch line.
I can do that.
Yeah, the four inch line or the three inch line, both of them?
The three inch is gonna be 18 months still? Is that long enough?
That's a council direction.
I'd do 24 on both though.
And I, I just, to be clear, new businesses that come in, in January, they're coming in at the new rates.
Yeah.
Which is, which is the issue that we've been trying to deal with all along is we have to right-size this before we have a grocery store hit our doors, before we have anything else come our direction, another restaurant, et cetera. We need to make sure that we have fixed the rate issue in utility fund, at, at least in this area. Then we've got other issues we're going to have to fix as we go along.
And not just new builds, but just new meters, right? Any new meters that come on, even if it's an existing.
New rates as of the December meeting would be at this rate.
Yeah.
Period. No 24-month ramp up, no, not just the existing lines would have the 24-month grace to get there for the three and four inch meters. The, anything from five eighths to two inch, do you want them to have the same 24-month or do you want them to be on a 12-month? Or 18-month or whatever makes sense to council.
What's the, this for Brooks? If we do it straight across 24 for everybody?
Well, it's certainly gonna be easier for Julie to implement that, yes. Than having two separate schedules. I will tell you that that's gonna be difficult to keep up with.
It's gonna be painful to go to, to fix the water rates and make our public works utility fund solvent. I think it's a great compromise to adopt the new rates as written, grandfather, and then phase them in over a 24-month period, which will make the tearing of the Band-Aid off a lot less painful for everybody. It's fair, it's equitable to everybody, not just one or two entities. It gives everybody break, but that's how I see it.
And to Mr. Dominguez's point, that modern welding can reduce their line. Any, anyone can, yes.
Their property.
I've never heard of a three inch irrigation meter. I mean, I, I, that's the biggest size we got to two inch irrigation meter. So.
Stranger things have happened.
Yeah. Yes, I know.
Exactly.
This is what we're trying to fix this, yeah.
Can we say for like the first three months, the first six months, that, that they can be at like the 385.56 if they're non-irrigation?
Well, I think you're just, yeah, we're gonna have to figure out.
Yeah, well, we can bring that back as a set schedule for you all to look at in December. This is, okay, the three-month market moves to this, and the six-month it moved to this, et cetera, et cetera.
But we've already said that we're okay with everybody moving to 385. Like, not everybody, but the, those big lines, we're okay with that. So that can be the minimums.
Oh, you want to immediately go to 385?
Yeah, see, we were.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
So do you have a direction from, from us?
Really clear as well.
Yes, 24 months?
I'm gonna suggest to the administrator that you ask for a specific minute order to be, somebody make a motion and give you some specific directions.
Wonderful. Thank you.
This isn't an ordinance and in a resolution, what you're gonna do is it's gonna sound like a motion. You're gonna make a motion, you're gonna give the city administrator specific instructions as to the rates and the amounts and the times.
All right, I'm gonna later pay a motion.
I move that we adopt the water rates, uh, as stated across the board and phase these in over a two-year period. Rates, those interim rates to be determined, determined, uh, by the city administrator and public works.
A little bit loose with the determined by. Are you?
Once a quarter is what we were anticipating, um, having changes in and just run the math on it and see how it calculates out.
Can you modify it with the three and four inch line starting at 385?
Well, to at least have a difference between irrigation and.
I do think that's, that's not, the, the juice is not worth the squeeze on that. We're not going to get enough in the utility fund to really make that be an issue and it's gonna cost us more to actually implement it on the staff side because we, we only have one person in utility billing at the time.
Yeah, my, my intention with the motion was to keep it as simple as possible.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion periods. Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Uh, we, we have reached a compromise. Thank you. Just remember that this, we knew this would be painful and there was a lot of different opinions. But we have, uh, the whole point is to save the utility fund from bankruptcy and to protect our future so that we can keep our citizens served. So thank you very much. We'll move out on that. All right, moving on. Item number G, the public works position realignment for the department, Public Works Director.
Good afternoon again. Can I get it here for me one more time? Uh, well, the structure in, uh, public work. So we have talked about this, uh, prior in the past about a public, uh, works admin assistant. And I had a personnel lead for personal matters. And I have discussed this with my department, making sure we're fine. And I wanted to realign that position into an admin role, uh, public work, uh, public works admin assistant because there's multiple factors. Uh, I feel like there's a lot of work coming in now and I was keeping up there for a minute, but I finally feel like I'm a bit overwhelmed on my side. And I could use some assistance and to, uh, free up some time of my time to actually go out and do a lot more, uh, out in the field, uh, operations, work, whatever's needed, and just be a little more flexible in multiple ends. Uh, we have some, we have plenty of tasks for a person to help with. Uh, we need to create a backflow prevention program, keeping up with, keeping up with things, uh, grease traps, uh, this person will learn, uh, water billing in case Julie's out or even the new position that goes in. We gotta have redundancy in every department and never hurts to have somebody, uh, an extra person. Bills and invoices, it's, that's probably my, one of my hardest, uh, areas is trying to maintain that. Create a maintenance schedule, mechanical calibration schedule, public work record, uh, inventory jobs and work orders. We gotta get, uh, better at that for the state audits. They ask for complaints, whether it's water, sewer, whatever it is. And right now, when I have my five-year, um, uh, audit, I just kinda go back and, and look around and see what I can find. Uh, it's, usually we don't get much, thank God, but, uh, and then public work fees, there's more things that we need to fix, um, later on. But there's multiple tasks that I would like to start focusing on a little harder and, and this is why we brought it back up to you.
So if council were to call in our budget retreat, we had, for last fiscal year, we talked about the idea of needing two additional techs and a public works admin assistant. At that point in time, just because of the numbers and the funding for utility fund, we determined to pause on the admin assistant and to fill the public works technician's positions because those are going to be boots on the ground in the field. We have a team now of four.
Yes, four.
Um, folks that are out in the field in varying levels of responsibility and Mr. Dominguez. Where we're really falling short is in that organization and getting all of the reports in order and making sure that we're hitting all of those deadlines. Um, that this person can also help with development, et cetera. Um, so what we're basically saying is don't fill the fifth technician position and reallocate those funds to an admin assistant. So it's, it's budget neutral to a great extent. And we have been very fortunate in the last round when we interviewed from the utility billing clerk that we have found two good candidates. One that would be willing to take, um, the utility billing clerk position that will work very clearly was Mrs. Rutherford. And another one that could fit in very nicely as an admin assistant for Mr. Dominguez. Uh, we've also managed to move things around in the office. You know, we mentioned that we had a spare office at the beginning and we had some other space we could grow into. So we do have the ability to absorb this position without having to, you know, fruit basket turnover everybody in the building. So I would recommend or ask council if they consider that reallocation. I think it will make a tremendous difference in the burnout of Mr. Dominguez at his department.
And I believe it would allow him to be a manager and not a worker bee. He, he, we hired him to be a department head. That's, I, I, I kinda think this.
Right now, he's trying to do both and I'm watching him, uh, kinda chase his tail all the time.
I feel his pain.
Yeah, it's, it's a challenge for us.
Council have any more discussion on that? Or do you wish to make a motion to give staff direction?
Um, the only comment I would have is a, you know, just try not to create silos in your department. Um, such that this is my only task and this is what I do when at times you may need to shift priorities depending on what's going on.
Mr. Loftus, that is actually something that we have been reading a book about as department heads and learning, uh, all kinds of things as it relates to becoming high performance. Because we do not have time for silos. I don't care what department you're in.
Yeah, I guess my comment is that, you know, it's possible next year you may come back and things have changed.
That's true.
Have to make another personnel change.
That is true.
Would you like to offer a motion to provide guidance to staff to reallocate the funding?
I make a motion directing staff to reallocate the funds for the public works technician position to an administrative assistant for the department.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
All right, moving to our last item on the regular agenda, the Wise County appraisal district representative vote.
Thank you, mayor. This is something that comes up as a regular course of business for you all each year as we approach the new calendar here. You can tell by your agenda memo for tonight's meeting that we went from 33 votes that we had last year to cast. This year we have 54 votes to cast. Uh, the ballot is, um, before you in your agenda packet, in your memo, and in the packet itself, there are six people on there that are incumbents. Five if you remove Mr. Shaw, Monty Shaw, and then you've got the list of the folks who have been nominated and who they were nominated by. That's about all the information I can get from the appraisal district. So I can't tell you what each person's particular, um, expertise is and what they bring to the table like you do when you are evaluating a person to serve as a council member like we recently did with Mr. Finch. So, um, I really can't give you any help on which way that we particularly address these. I did note which ones were incumbents and how long they had been on the board, if I could find that. And I was able to get from the appraisal district who nominated the people who were not incumbents. So that that might give you at least a little bit of information. But, um, we have to make a decision at this meeting how you'd like to allocate your votes amongst these folks. And you can do one for this one and two for that one and 15 for that one, but, um, that's a council's direction.
Like I'm an antiprem.
Now, as far as, uh, the performance of the appraisal district, um, does the city have any comments about the performance of the appraisal district?
I can say from our interactions, Mr. Loftus, I haven't ever had an issue with the appraisal district or the staff that I've had to call and ask for clarification or work with them on our taxing rate. They've been very responsive and I've never had an issue with them.
So if, um, I was trying to get at point that if there is a problem, then maybe we shouldn't be voting for incumbents. But that sounds like that's not an issue.
We've not as staff. We, they've been very responsive and very helpful.
So what we're being asked to do is vote for somebody on this page right now that we have.
Like I said, you can, you can, you have 54 different hash marks that we can allocate. What they do is they give you the ballot. Um, I will tell you that people like Decatur ISD have 900 hash marks, so they're probably gonna carry the day. Um, but they are at least asking us for our opinion. Um, Wise County has 1,138 votes. So if you wanted to give two to Mr. Cook and five to Mr. Lewis and five to, I'm assuming that's Mr. Ruddick, and, uh, five to Mr. Starnes and five to Mrs. Schluter, you could certainly do that as long as they equal 54.
Could we allocate the 54 votes amongst the existing incumbents?
You absolutely can't. I just, I can't make the decision, so we're bringing it to council for you all to give me some direction.
That's not a really good way to have collection when you don't know the candidates and their policies or what they did.
Well, we. John Lewis, the people that are doing it now, we really don't have a problem with. So they've been doing our, and they've been doing their job.
My only comment would be the last two on the list are here in South Wise County. And Aaron, I believe, would be in South Wise County also. It might represent our interests a little better.
So you have five positions that you can cast the ballots for. You all just had to tell me, how do you want the number to allocate? positions that you can pass the ballots for. You all just had to tell me, how do you want the numbers allocated? Mr. Shaw is appointed by the county, so that's not one for you all to look at.
And there are four incumbents. Fifty-four votes. Of my four people.
Which isn't gonna do anything.
Unless we do what Randall then, put all fifty-four votes towards someone who is an incumbent and has interest in this portion of Wise County.
You can certainly do that. And I failed to mention, Mr. Starnes is not on the ballot, so the one that on your agenda memo that says current board members, he is not running again. It is a difficult position for you all to, to make that, to cast a vote and I did talk to the appraisal district and they were very clear that much like the municipal court and others, we are not, they cannot sway your vote. They can only give you the information that they've been given. And so this is the most that I have been able to, um, pull up without having a little more identifying information on folks.
Are we allowed to, uh, pass half of the, minus thirteen and a half?
No, I don't think so. I think it has to be a full hash mark of that.
No, I think I'm good, Mr. Loftus, to make that decision.
Thank you, motion.
I will read that. Thank you, ma'am.
You're right.
I move we allocate ten votes to Lee Worley, ten votes to Tina, five to ten votes to Karen Schluter, and ten votes to Bill Lewis and the remaining votes to Noel Ruddock.
Noel, all right. Do we have a second for that motion?
I second.
I, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Aye.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, council.
All right, do we have? At this time, are there any, uh, future agenda items that council would like us to put on the list?
I would like to note that I need to add just cues from the last meeting, so we, we have forgotten. I just didn't get it on our list.
Do you have any further agenda items that you guys would like to put, have added at this time? Nothing hurt. All right, at this time I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make the motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I need a second.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 And one more. Thank you very much. Very good.